I'm calling this meeting of the Town of Silver City Council to order. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and purely public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have two proclamations to issue tonight. So I will, the first proclamation is, is For Give Grandly, Give Local Day, which is May the 6th, 2017. And the second proclamation is during the month of April is Child Abuse Prevention Month in Silver City. So I'd like to recognize both of these things with a proclamation and I'll come down and do that from the podium. Who will receive the proclamation for the Give Grandly? I've got my glasses, but I think I can read it. Whereas Silver City is a town blessed by numerous nonprofit organizations which provide individual services such as sheltering our homeless, feeding our hungry, and caring for our youth. And whereas, Give Grandly, Give Local Day, May the 6th, 2017, is the fourth community-wide given event hosted by the Grant County Community Foundation, online at www.grantcountycommunityfoundation.org. And whereas, there are 51 registered participants. And whereas, Give Grandly, Give Local Day shall grow the spirit of giving and raise as much money as possible for the nonprofits in the Silver City area. And whereas, through the Grant County Community Foundation and its partner, the Southwest New Mexico Nonprofit Coalition, Give Grandly, Give Local Day shall inspire the public to support our nonprofit organizations on this one day, May the 6th, 2017. Now therefore, I Ken Ladner, Mayor of the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim, May 6th, 2017, as the fourth ever Give Grandly, Give Local Day. And be it further proclaimed that for all citizens, it is the official day for providing financial support for all of the causes that continue to move our town forward. Would you identify yourself and then would you like to say a few words?
Yes. Hello everyone, my name is Henneke Boone and I'm the Business Manager with the Community Partnership for Children. On behalf of Grant County Community Foundation Board, the Southwest New Mexico Profit Coalition, and the 53 nonprofits participating in Give Grandly, Give Local. We thank you for supporting this endeavor for the fourth year in a row. Our area nonprofits provide much-needed services that enhance the quality of life in Southwest New Mexico. Each year we make history. In 2016, we raised the most money ever raised in Grant County in 24 hours, $107,000. Since the beginning of 2014, we have raised over $250,000 for local nonprofits. This year, we intend to make history again. Please join us at the Silver City's Farmer's Market from 8:30 to 2:00 on Saturday. May 6th for food, music, information, and unlimited community spirit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who has yet to receive the Child Abuse Prevention? Well, let me go ahead and read this proclamation because it's a very important one. Whereas, we all have a responsibility as individuals, neighbors, community members, and citizens of Silver City to help create healthy, safe, and nurturing experiences for children. And whereas, safe and healthy childhoods help produce confident and successful adults. And whereas, child abuse and neglect often occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and they do not know how to cope. And whereas, the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive community. And whereas, child abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure every family has the support they need and deserve to raise their children in a healthy environment. And whereas, it is recognized that no one person can do everything, but that everyone can do something. And together, we can create change for the better. And whereas, effective prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among agencies, schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas, displaying a blue ribbon in April will serve as a positive reminder that together, we can prevent child abuse and keep children safe. Now therefore, I Ken Ladner, Mayor of the Town of Silver City, do hereby proclaim, April 2017, as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Silver City. And I urge all citizens to engage in activities that strengthen families and communities to provide the optimal environment for children to learn, grow, and thrive, so that all children have the benefit of happy, healthy, and safe childhoods. The next item on the agenda is public input. Please come forward and identify yourself and tell us what you have today.
Okay. Oh, good evening, my name is Sarice Kharhava. I am the Transportation Planner for the Southwest Council Governments. And today, I just briefly wanted to introduce you to the RTPO process, which stands for Regional Transportation Program Organization. And what this is, is the New Mexico Department of Transportation contracted with each of the council governments and hired a transportation planner, so that we can have inclusion of the rural areas, instead of just the urban. So I cover the four regions in the southwest, which is Catrin, Hidalgo, Luna, and Grant. So I just basically wanted to make you all aware of, you know, that I am here to assist you with transportation-related projects, which include multimodal planning, design, and funding opportunities. We also have RTPO meetings, which have changed to three times a year. And our next meeting will be June 23rd at 9:30. And these meetings basically provide assistance in planning, design, and community outreach on transportation projects. And also, the Department of Transportation attends these meetings just to support every project and answer any questions you may have, as far as funding. And there's a couple of programs that me and myself handle here in the rural area on behalf of the Department of Transportation. And these include the Transportation Alternatives Program. And this is basically funding for pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, scenic pullouts, safe routes to school activities, and all the local public agencies qualify for this program. There's approximately 5.5 million awarded to this specific program. And the next call for projects for this specific program starts again in 2018. And what that means is, I'll send out a call for projects and you'll go ahead and submit me your projects and we can review them and then hope for funding to support these projects. Also, the second program that we have is a recreational trails program. And this is funding for motorized and non-motorized recreational trails, related amenities and education. And this is also approximately 1.5 million for this program and is also a call for projects in the year 2018. So when I do elicit the call for projects, I do go and visit the local governments and let them know, you know, that we are looking for projects to be funded and this will be for year 2020 and 21. And also, part of my duties is to act as a liaison between the local governments and the Department of Transportation, and also to provide data and technical assistance as needed and requested. I know that was kind of quick, I usually do a PowerPoint, but I was too late to get on the agenda. But I do have a card here, if you have any questions, I can sit one-on-one with you or provide more information if needed. But I just wanted to introduce myself and let you know that I am a transportation planner for the Council of Governments.
Thank you. Where are the councilors, anyone getting in touch with you if they have any questions?
Well, we are located at 1203 North Hudson, which is the Washington Federal Building upstairs. And also, I have a card here, if you would like one. Also with Priscilla Lucero, which is the Executive Director of the Council of Governments.
Okay. If you leave with Diane, she'll make sure and make that happen.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
... projects and everything like that. So she's been a big help with us acquiring funding, for instance, like the Cooper Street sidewalk project, Silver Street, keeping us aware of where our projects are on the step and the different programs that the DOT has. So we really appreciate their help at the, at the pub.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is council comments. Council of Edison, I think you're first tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that Saturday was quite busy. It's been quite a busy week last week in town. And I wanted to thank the Office of Sustainability and everyone on the Recycling Committee for getting the e-waste and the shredder. The Big Shredder was an attraction for a lot of people, because they could just put all those bills on there and they didn't want, and shred everything all at once. But Earth Day, I think, went really well. When I was there, it was really quite crowded. And I know I saw the mayor that was there and the other folks that were there. The Tour de Hila was, once again, the downtown criterion was really quite wonderful. And I was really pleased to see all the citizens involved in the citizens race. And the March for Science, I understand that there were between about 150 and 170 folks that did that, walked down to Golf Park. And I really appreciate, Silver City was one of the four towns in New Mexico that was listed in the Santa Fe Reporter as having March for Science. So I'm really pleased that we made that and did that. There was about 4,000 that showed up in Santa Fe and equally a much larger amount in Albuquerque. And I wanted to thank the Kennedys again for storing our streetlights and for the mayor finding out. So we had a nice little dedication yesterday after their anniversary. And the one, one thing I would ask, I do this periodically, for a while, I was doing it every meeting, is please stop at stop signs, especially if you're gonna shoot out after a blind curve. You don't know who's coming around the corner. And while it may be really windy outside, it doesn't mean kids are not outside playing. So you can't presume that you will not hit something. So please, they're there for a reason. We really do want you to stop, not to gun it and go through it. And so I would just ask that, and I would ask the folks that are driving downtown to just be cognizant of the different crosswalks down at Broadway and Bullard. If people are crossing, it's really not a good thing to pull out to the intersection and wait for them to cross as you're turning left. It kind of gets the pedestrians a little fearful that you might just keep going, especially if a car's coming down the street. So, so please just make sure you're watching all those crosswalks. And I know that we talked last time about the corners at 6th? Yeah, 6th and Bullard. And that too, just, just wait till the person has finished going through the crosswalk before pulling into the intersection. Thanks a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Tunnell.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one announcement. On this next Saturday, April 29th, WNMU will be hosting the 50th Annual Great Race. Anyone who's an alum of Western probably has great, great race memories. So hopefully, most of the community will come down and support that and be a part of the festivities. They begin at 10 o'clock at Old James Stadium, and the race is at 11. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, the Tour de Hila went well. There was a lot of participants. And the only drawback that I saw was downtown, where that traffic was very congested on the sidewalks. And there was a lot of young kids with bikes. And it was very congested for them to be walking there. Maybe that's something that we can take into consideration for next year. Also, I talked to a couple of guys, city workers, yesterday on the recycled. And, excuse me. They were telling me yesterday that there are people that are putting garbage with that, that has a lot of dirt on the blue containers. And it's, it should be that way, because I think, I think there's an ordinance for that, right? Or there's a, some sort of law towards it?
Yes, there, the ordinance talks about that. Well, it talks about, this is garbage in the green ones, if you're talking about, right? Yes, there.
Okay. And, and they could send the code enforcement officials out there and maybe do a walk or a citation.
Well, actually, now that we are getting settled into the rhythm of everything with the recycling, we are gonna start sending code enforcement out there to look at the recycled containers. But if the garbage containers have, are full of dirt, then they will notify the resident and quit site them.
And also, the green ones, there are some businesses that are putting their cardboard and they're just folding them up. So when they go to pick it up, it doesn't come out. And they would like for the residents to at least tear them apart and pull them down, because they could damage those containers, correct?
Yes.
And they'll have to get down and pull them by hand, and it's, it's quite a bit of work. And they're great big containers also.
Yeah, we can have Terry Kimmy go out and talk to those businesses, if we can identify who they are.
Okay. And now, getting back to the Tour de Hila, I went to the local motels. And I asked for permission to see if they could give me information as to how many bicycles stayed in the motel. And I'm not gonna mention the motel, but one had 35 rooms, another one had 35 rooms, another one had 15 rooms, another one had 52 rooms, another one had 40 rooms, another one had 30 rooms. And I guess that'd be roughly about 175 rooms. And I don't know how many there are rooms in Silver City that are available, probably three to four times that amount?
It's about 15.
Okay. So...
Were they paying?
They were paying.
Okay.
They were, they were paying. They were paying. And they, I think that we should try and promote them, the motels, and for the bikers, and maybe give them some sort of incentive to stay there, instead of, and I don't wanna get in trouble, instead of B&amp;Bs. And, that's, oh, another thing also. I would like to see if it is possible for the Town of Silver City, Mr. Brown, to see if, make some sort of language or make some sort of comments on the possibility of parking in this downtown. And maybe, maybe you can do this for the next time around, for the next, for the next time, Council, we can give some sort of report, if possible, if it's feasible.
I've never looked at it, so I can look into see what it would take. It would require an ordinance, because we would be regulating the parking much stricter than what we do right now. And so, but yeah, I can, I can see what I can do.
I've got one more thing also. I would like to see more cameras downtown. I would like to see more cameras downtown, safety, to protect the citizens of Silver City and to protect the buildings. I know some organizations will say it's an infringement on their, on their civil rights. Well, I don't think so. I think safety is a, is a big issue. And safety has to take care of its business. And we have to protect our people and we have to protect the citizens also, and their buildings. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Amy Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, Councilor, for doing the occupancy rate of the hotels. That's great. So I too had a great time last weekend. It was hard to choose what to do. The thing that I think I enjoyed the most was seeing the community orchard behind the office, the sustainability, and how it has really flourished in the past year. And that is a multi-partnership. Lots of people are working on that. The Town, of course, and the Office of Sustainability, the Neighborhood Orchard Project, the water harvesting folks, the students from various high schools, the JHOKs. So it really shows how folks bringing their talents together can make something beautiful. And the mayor and I are gonna have to arm wrestle over those apples that are ripening there on that tree. This is the next coming weekend, on the 29th, we also have celebrations in town. That's our Trail Day with Continental Divide Trail and the walkers coming through, and Big Ditch Day downtown. So I think there will be a bunch of stuff downtown, as well as up on the hill with the Great Race. So that'll be fun. I want to put a plug in for citizens serving on our town committees. I know that we have on our town website a list of folks that we need volunteers. And I want to acknowledge, we've got a volunteer here in the chambers tonight, who serves on the recycling committee and was out there on Saturday, getting sunburned, working in the, you know, getting stuff in the electronic recycling. There are a number of committees that really, really are a great way to engage with the town. You get to learn how things work and work with town staff and really have an effect on your community. So I really want to put a plug in for, and if you ever want to run for office, starting by volunteering for committees is a great way to figure out how things, how things work. And then finally, before I close, I want to acknowledge and thank Ms. Gribb. Hey, Sweets, thanks for coming and talking. I learned a whole lot about applying for grants, about the Master Bus of the Plan and various trails grants. And even if you don't get it the first time, we keep trying, don't worry, Mr. Brown. So I'm gonna thank the Southwest Council of Governments and Sarice for the work that she does for our community. Thank you.
Any other council comments? I too would like to add my thanks to the hundreds of people that have volunteered, and especially this past weekend, for all those events that took place. It's a good example to me, once again, of how our community can rally behind these volunteer efforts and make so many good things happen. One thing that wasn't mentioned, over in Penny Park, there was the Child Abuse Prevention Event, and there were lots of tables there with different aspects of how to prevent child abuse. And Chief, I noticed that some of the police force was there with the DARE project. I think it's, is it DARE? D-A-R-E? Yeah. And so I want to thank, thank you and your, your staff for being part of that as well. As Councilor Amy Smith found out, we have a lot of committees that people really serve diligently on. One committee I'd like us to look at, at some point, is the Incentive Review Committee. That's a committee that's supposed to look at incentives for businesses to be in Silver City and start up. And getting people to serve on that committee is almost impossible. In the year that I've been mayor, we haven't had one person volunteer. We have one, one, one person that's on that committee. And so I'd like us to look at that and figure out if we need to do something with that committee, revise it or change it in some way, so that it can be effective. Because if it really was effective, we'd probably have more people wanting to get on it. That's just my gut feeling, I don't know that for sure. So I'd like, I'd like the council at some point to think about that and, and maybe visit with whoever we need to visit with. I'm not sure what the administrative protocol is for that. And the other thing is, I'm a poster child for how well the wireless water meters work. Last Monday, I think it was, I received a phone call from the city, they were looking at water usage. And they happened to notice that at a cottage that I own, which is unoccupied, I just use it whenever family come to visit, in eight days, I used 22,000 gallons of water. So I met the meter reader over there, we opened the door, I expect to open the door and water to come flowing out, but it turned out everything was high and dry. And we went in the bathroom and discovered that the flapper in the, in the water reservoir had broken and water was just simply running through the toilet. And I know those of you in the back can't see this, but this is a graph of my water usage, and it starts in March. And at the very bottom is a thin line, which indicates I had a leak, which was like .04 gallons per hour, I guess. And then there's a spike right here, on March the 31st, which is when I went over there and flushed out everything, turned on the shower and the hot water heater to flush out the pipes and whatnot. And then I didn't go back until this happened. And so I think what this tells me is that I need to go check on that house more. But the other thing it tells me is that this system really works. If I hadn't known about that, because when I walked in the house, we couldn't hear any water running, because the water was flowing out so quickly, it was not making any noise. So if I had gone over there, I probably wouldn't have heard any water running. So this, this is a great example, and I talked to Mr. Brown, and this is just one of many examples, right? Right, Alex?
Yes, I believe it is, on average, 600 water leaks. And we're trying to address the bigger ones first, and then trying to, there's, there's some that are so small that it's, it would probably cost the customer more to fix the leak than for us just to leave it alone. So, but in cases like yours, 22,000 gallons in, in a short period is a, is a big leak. So, and we found some on our own facilities. I was, I was, we found one in the... I was, I was, we found one at the visitor's center that ended up being 200 and some thousand gallons in a month, and it was because the irrigation system got, the automatic valve to turn it on and off, it got stuck in the open position, but it was flushing out somewhere. And we found it because it was the third highest biggest leak of the month. And then at the sustainability office, we found another leak. But we couldn't figure out how to, because there's a lot of the water line is under concrete, so we ended up having to put a new water line in. So, and those were both very big leaks, so, yeah, we...
The long-term event is that we're going to keep conserving more and more water as we figure out how to stop these kind of leaks and whatnot. Next item on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Councilor Bedison?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to remove under New Business C, approval slash disapproval of memorandum of understanding supporting Fort Bear property. It's not ready for primetime yet.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I have a second motion to stay.
Councilwoman Smith, any, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item is the approval of minutes of the April 11, 2017 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of April 11, 2017.
Second?
Mr. Mayor, I want a second motion to stay there.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is reports. Mr. Brown?
I'm here to approve the only report that was scheduled was by the Arts and Cultural District on Tourism. I had a meeting with them today, and we were discussing the kiosk for the trailhead at the visitor's center. They are ready, they are very close and ready to put that project out for construction. So I asked them to bring it to our next council meeting, because it was too late to put it on the agenda for this one. So I asked them, rather than them doing one this week and another one the following week, I mean, following council meeting, that they do their report as well as the request for, to present that kiosk to you, to you guys next week. So we don't have a report from them today.
Then the next item requiring action is New Business. Item 11A is the approval slash disapproval of public celebration permit application for a kneeling nun bike run sponsored by Q's Southern Bistro LLC on May 26 through 27, 2017, from 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. at 101 West College Avenue, Silver City, New Mexico. Licenseholder information, Brandy Iron, Brandy Iron Brewery Brewing Company, license number 67025. Owner's name, Q's Southern Bistros LLC, 101 West College Avenue, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061. Who will be presenting this request? Would you please identify yourself and make your request?
Hello, my name is Ronald Kimpong, and I am one of the owners, managers of Q's Southern Bistro. And it's just a annual event that we do every year for the Blues Festival weekend, Memorial Day weekend. It's the seventh one that we'll be hosting. And we're doing it a little bit different this year, where we won't be serving alcohol out on the street. But I still have to call for a public celebration license, because it's not on the blueprint or the floor plan of my regular licensing, which will cover the outside of our little patio. We'll still be blocking off the street, but just we won't be fencing it in and serving alcohol outside. We'll be letting the bikes park in front of the restaurant, and we're getting together in older cars, older cars that will be, be parking on the opposite side of Pope Street as well.
Um, I, did you send an invitation to close the street?
We did.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I haven't seen it yet, so I'll need to address that.
We, I already got on the permits too, and all that stuff, so we got them all back.
Oh, you did? Okay. So they must have done it before we were setting up?
Oh, yeah. I did that almost a month ago.
Oh, so it was before all of this was, okay. So that's why I don't remember it. I'm sorry.
Continue, Bush.
Okay, okay. So we will be closing off the street, but the way that we're doing it is, it's just different. We're not fencing it off. We won't be having anybody having alcohol out on the street of Pope Street. It'll all be on Q's property. The only reason why we are closing off the street is that way the bikes do have a place to be parking and begin and finish up their, their bike run. So that's pretty much it.
Bedison?
I want to get the same one.
No, I have another question.
Okay. So I have a, I have a question, because I got confused. On the, on the agenda, it says on May 26 to 27, from 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. But on the alcohol gaining public celebration permit application, it says that the event begins on the 26th at 4:00 p.m., and the event ends at 27th at 11:00 p.m. And then alcohol service begins at 11:00 a.m., and alcohol service ends at 11:00 p.m. Is that every, both the 26th and the 27th?
I serve alcohol inside my restaurant from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. every Friday and Saturday. The only difference is, is that the actual event for serving alcohol on the outside on Friday starts at 4:00. So from 4:00 p.m., the hours from 4:00 p.m. starting on Friday, we'll be able to bring out alcohol outside throughout whatever legal hours that we're able to until 11:00 p.m. the following day.
I mean, it's usually that you actually list the day, like the 26th, and you say you'll serve from 4:00 p.m., you know, whatever the day is.
So Friday will be served from 4:00 p.m. until 11:00 p.m. Saturday will be served from 11:00 p.m., 11:00 a.m. until 11:00 p.m.
Okay, so you can correct this before it goes up there.
Sure.
Yeah. It's just, it's just so that, because they're going to ask that, rather than, because right now it looks like 24 hours, you know?
It's going to be 24 hours.
Yes, well. And, and the only other question I have is, are the sidewalks going to be open on both sides?
They will be.
Okay.
People will be able to walk on either side of the sidewalks, with the bikes, look at the cars, everything, and stuff like that. Like we, right now we have about 10 cars that are from like the 1960s that are going to be parked outside of there in front of Q's as well. Then instead of having the bikes parked so far down Pope Street where the bike run starts and begins, they'll be parked there in front of Q's. We did a bike run about three years ago that way, and it just looked really cool with all the bikes parked in front of Q's. It just lined up, and there was probably like a good 200 bikes, so. And then for the Blues Festival, there's usually more. And we've been working with Arts Council too, where they have it on their website, where the parking is going to be with us. So it'll be down there, so everything will be, we're working together, but the majority of the stuff for the bikes will be down there at Q's.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion? Councilor Connor?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve public celebration permit application for a kneeling nun bike run sponsored by Q's Southern Bistro LLC on May 26 to 27, 2017, from 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. At 101 West College Avenue, Silver City, New Mexico. Licenseholder information, Brandy Iron Brewing Company, license number 67025. Owner's name, Q's Southern Bistro LLC, 101 West College Avenue, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second? Councilor Ray?
Second motion. I'm not seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 11B under New Business is the approval slash disapproval of bid number 16-17-5, sale of water meters. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, councilor? The town received nine bids for the water meter, water meters. As you can see, it's, it's staff's recommendation to award the bid to Dino Miller Global Industries for the amount of $28,648.60.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Brown? Do I hear a motion? Councilor Bedison?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of bid number 16-17-5, sale of water meters per staff recommendation to Global Industrial Meter, or also known as Dino Miller Global Industrial for $26,648.60. Well, I was looking at this one down here. $28,648.60. Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Councilwoman Smith?
I'll have a motion.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. The next item, 11C, was removed from the agenda in action earlier taken by the council. Item 11D is the continuation of budget discussions for the fiscal year 2017-2018. Mr. Brown?
What I, what I'm presenting to you here today is the results of the discussion from last time, because there is not, there's no action that's been taken at the state level, so I don't know how to proceed with that. But on, on the first page with the general fund, the numbers that you see there today is that we actually do meet our 1/12 reserve with a little, a tiny excess. If we do postpone the raises for this next year, or cancel them for this next year, then we will meet our 1/12 reserve without having to raise property taxes. So many different scenarios. One scenario is the state does nothing to our hold harness. If you're going to give those raises, we are going to have to raise property tax. Number two, if the state speeds up the hold harness and doesn't completely take it away, the one option that we have to keep the budget completely as is without the raises is that we can pass the one mil property tax and the three eights. This is the most that we can eat without cutting operations, cutting services, is that we could probably generate about $500,000 extra by passing those two taxes. Because, well, it's not 500,000. It was 400, $410,000. Because it's 200,000 in property tax and 210 in hold harness, because we only get it for four months. And, and so that is, that's the tipping number, is 510,000 dollars before we have to start cutting. If they cut us more than that at the state level, then we're going to have to cut in operations. Okay?
Any questions or recommendations from Mr. Brown? Councilor Bedison?
Uh, Mr. Brown, can you clarify? I understood that we could defer those raises at a time, we just used the term canceled tonight.
Well, the reason is, is because those raises are cost of living raises.
I see.
Uh, there is one with ASME, which I would recommend to defer, because that is a one-time raise. But the, the cost of living, which are every year, would be, I wouldn't want to not do it this year and then do two years' worth next year, just making the problem worse.
Okay.
So that's the reason for that change in language.
Thank you. I understand that better now. So the, sort of the tipping point, is it 500,000? The number is about 410,000.
410,000.
410,000.
410,000.
And so we have a variety of potential evils that could be done to us, all the way from nothing, where we still need to take some action, to having the legislature say, well, rather than 15 years, what we're going to do is cut it in half, or pull it all in right now. But you're looking at sort of the potential worst-case scenario here.
Potential worst-case scenario, I'm looking at a whole bunch of cuts.
Right.
That's worst-case scenario.
Worst-case scenario.
It's going to be a combination of tax increases and cuts. Yeah, so, I mean, you're going to pay more to get less.
Yeah, that's painful. Yeah.
Yes, and so that's...
So I have a question and a request at the forum that three of us councilors attended last Thursday. Representative Martinez answered a question in the audience, and audience member said, "What can we do as municipalities and citizens to let the legislators, people who are other than our representatives, and maybe even some of our representatives, understand how awful this would be?" And Representative Martinez suggested that letters explaining the catastrophic effects on us might be sent to legislators other than him and Howie and others. I'd like to discuss that, bring that up as a potential recommendation for our town to do that, just as education.
Yes, because the information is already out there. We know exactly what, you know what numbers, the public knows what numbers locally. If the mayor would like, I could work with the mayor, and we could put a letter together to explain the impacts and, and send it out to the senators and representatives across the state.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that.
I'm not sure she'll read it.
I'd like to dispense with getting permission to speak, since this is a discussion.
It's a discussion now, yes.
Let's discuss it between ourselves, as well as with Mr. Brown, just as if we were sitting around a table together.
It's a, I think we need to do that, and I think we need to, to at least let... Another municipal leak has done that, and has done it several times, but I think if it's coming from the town itself, from our mayor, saying this, look what's going to happen on our end, you know, we're going to be really, really, really hurt. It's with everybody.
They're going to, it's with everybody, and they're going to look at, only look at their, their municipalities that they represent, not the whole big picture, and that's the problem with the way that they, using this cookie cutter approach is, it affects us some a lot more than it does others. And, you know, say for instance, if it were a $1.7 million cut to Las Cruces, eh, that's nothing. But when we put it in the perspective of, this is 18% of our total gross receipts compared to anybody else, you know, that's, that's, that's a different story. And so, you know, and then the fact that we're right over the 10,000 limit, the arbitrary number that they chose. And it would be, I would really like to, to look at the actual, see if the adjusted 2016 census numbers are up, because if we're below 10,000 on that, because I believe last year we were at 10,002, was the adjusted census numbers. So if we're below, then we say, look how arbitrary this thing is. Is that, had it been, if you did it by this, we would be exempt from this whole thing in the first place. But because you use this arbitrary number, we are getting impacted the hardest of any community in the state, percentage-wise. Not dollar, though total dollar-wise, but percentage of our total gross receipts. So that, that is something that, you know, I'd really like to look at that as well.
And I think those numbers just came out too. I think I got a notice from the Census Bureau that those are out, so I didn't look. So that would be good. So you're thinking not only a strategy of talking about how horribly devastating any plan would be, but also bringing it to legislative response, that that was an arbitrary decision. And, you know, arbitrary decisions do have consequences.
You know, the one thing... You know, the one thing that, you know, we're talking about it because it's arbitrary decision, and if we drop below the 10,000, then, you know, we should not, you know, we should not be, the money shouldn't be taken away anymore. I remember the discussion being with a number of senators when this first brought up, is they said, well, if you go to 10,000 or 10,001, you know, then, then we will start to, to take the 6% away or more, depending on where you are in the cycle, you know, of your, your hold harmless. So, but there is no, when we decrease the population, I don't think there was any sort of setup or any sort of discussion about, well, do we get the stuff that's already been taken away and we get to keep everything? I mean, so the law's not written well enough for that to be answered, I don't think. But they certainly want their money if you go over the 10,000 threshold.
Most municipalities in the state of New Mexico are going backwards.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's sort of why they're in the situation that they're in with the budget. They have less taxpayers on top of oil and gas.
I had a good meeting with the Silver High School Student Council today, and I asked them about this issue, if anyone knew anything about it. Of course, no one did. But then I asked them if their household mother or father, anybody had talked about it. No one had. So if this represents, you know, the community at large, then maybe we need to do a little pre-PR to let people know what the possibilities are. The news media, I know, has been doing this periodically, but maybe we need to do it a little more, just so people can realize the gravity of the situation, not to create panic or to scare people, but, but if we do have to take some of these measures, then we might have a population that's suddenly upset that the city is raising taxes and doing this and that to them. But if people understand the reason why, you know, they, I think, would be a little more accepting and understanding. I don't know. What do you all think?
I honestly think the population, you know, is upset at the correct cause, which is that, you know, what's happening up in Santa Fe. But I agree, I've already had people coming and saying, well, you can't do anything with the library, the library's too important. Not thinking, not realizing, lunge into my spiel, but yeah. But, you know, Mayor, I don't think I would want to make education a precursor to sending out any such letter. I'd like to make a parallel, because they need to go on at the same time.
Keep people informed of what's going on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Mayor, I was just wondering, is there any way that we could, Alex, develop something that, you know, each council member has different folks and different groups that they do things with, where we could then at least get that out to the public in a sort of a standard sort of thing, that we're all saying the same thing, you know?
Fact sheet.
Sort of a fact sheet, so like if I'm at Rotary and I asked to be a speaker, I can give the fact sheet of what's going on. You know, Counselor Connaughton could do it for that, for her. I mean, I think that each one of us have different groups that we're a part of, and if we're all out there talking about this to our groups, but I would want it to be something that maybe, you know, along with the letter that the mayor does, something that we can use that is, even if you go down to the town or to any of our departments, you, you could get this fact sheet. And it'd be on the, on the, on the website. Do you know what I mean?
I have three tomorrow in Albuquerque, the following day in Las Cruces, and then I have interviews Friday. So if, Mayor, if we could get together on Monday to do the letter, and then I will, I will work on a fact sheet. I'll send it out to you guys and bounce it out for you guys, see what you guys think.
Get together Monday morning, if that's available for you.
After that fact sheet is done, I think it would also be beneficial for some of us to write to certain legislators ourselves as well, because some of us have personal contacts, you know.
Yes.
Along with the letter from the mayor, also if they're getting them from the counselors too, possibly, maybe it will sink in.
Sure. Monday morning's fine. Anytime, Monday morning is fine.
Okay, I'll check where they'll land on.
Yeah.
Mayor, if I could, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So I just want to go step back for a minute and just make sure that I understand that if, if they speed up hold harmless on July 1st, we, we don't have any. You know, they're not going to, no more checks are coming in or anything like that. So it's to raise the property tax one mil?
That's all we can do is because of the tax lightning issue, we can only do one mil a year.
Right.
Well, up 3% a year, so it's not even a full mil.
It's not even a full mil, okay. And then, and do the whole three eights.
The whole three eights.
The whole three eights, yeah, okay. I think that, then to go back to what we're talking about, that the fact sheet has to explain that, I mean, right now, I mean, hopefully this will all, we'll know where we're standing, we can do a better job of explaining what, what it is, because right now we're still talking about these options, because we don't, we don't know, they don't have a time set. And, and every time I hear someone say, well, we don't even think that they're talking, you know, I, I recall reading in the Santa Fe, New Mexican, when she went to Espanola, someone had asked her in the press corps, well, you know, when, you know, when do you have to have this done by? She goes, well, you know, the last couple of weeks of June. So we're going to have it done before, and I'm thinking, please, we cannot wait to the last couple of weeks of June. I mean, no one can because of all the other stuff that's part of this, so.
Yes, you know, when we, when we look at the fact sheet, we're, $330,000 of the 1.7 millions is included in this budget as it is right now, okay? So we've already eaten, eaten that much up. So we're looking at 1.4 million dollars. So we can cover 400,000. So the fact sheet's going to say, you know what, if they take the whole thing, it means taking, we're going to have to use examples of, of the size of each budget of each department, because a million dollars could take the entire museum and library and the swimming pool and, and part of the recreation center. You know, so, or there's other things that, you know, I mean, there's so many different options, but you can, we can only use that type of example of, in a complete department, because until I sit and I cut across different areas and departments, like for instance, Ed and I were talking today about some cuts that he can make without changing services. The fire department, we need to look at that. Finance, Public Works, all of Public Works, Museum, Library, even Municipal Court. So we, we need to look at all of them. So to have, to be able to still provide some service of each type, you know, we may go back to three, four days a week at the museum and the library. If we can find enough savings in the other departments to offset the loss, and then that most likely ends up becoming the norm. And that's, that's what's sad, unless they completely fix the system, this is what we're stuck with.
The one thing I want to make sure that we explain is, is there's two, actually there's two things. One, I mean, they could take it all, but they could take half of it. Another, and that still is going to be problematic for us to deal with, even if we do the taxes. I mean, that's another.
Yeah, if they take half of what's left, then that's 700,000, we've only got 400,000, so we've got to cut 300,000.
Right.
So there's so many different scenarios, depending on how fast they want to speed it up.
And I wouldn't want to make it so complicated, I mean, I like the fact that we would use illustrations and things like that, but I think it's really critical, because I think many people still don't understand, even though we've talked about it, that we don't receive the 8% that they're paying for when they go and purchase things. And that we are using a fraction of that. And, and so when someone says, I don't understand why you're not getting that money back for us, because we pay that, well, it's not all our money.
Yeah, it's only 3.2, a little bit, like 3.2%.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Of the 8%.
So I think we have to do a little, like show, this is what you pay right now is 8%, and this is what the municipality's portion there is, is of that.
I've got that break down in my office.
Okay. You know, like a, like a pie chart or something, that would make them understand visually.
I can do that, and that'll be easy with them.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, kind of like what we did when we talked about the taxes and stuff earlier with our county, so.
Oh, yes.
Assistant, yeah. So I think that pie charts, I mean, I know that many people think they're going by the wayside, but they really tell you right up front exactly how much is going to what.
Yeah, by far the most goes to the state and the parks.
Basically, all, it's like with the gas tax, at the 17 cents, we only get, what, 2 cents?
2 cents.
Yeah, yeah.
And New Mexico is the, is paying the smallest gas tax of any state within our, in most of the country, actually. The last time it was raised was 20 years ago. I believe in Texas, it's in the 30 cents. In Arizona, it's close to 30 some cents.
California's just skyrocketed.
California's way up there, but, you know, Colorado's is in the, in the 30s. So, you know, everybody's in the 30s and we're here sitting with the 17 cents, and we can't fix our roads and we can't balance our budget, we can't, you know, so it's. So I'll go on, the only other thing that I wanted to add was that I built in the, the rate increase into the sanitation fund. So that would leave us with a $62,000 reserve, and the, the full intent of that tax, of that increase was to have a reserve so that we could just, because of what's happening with recycling, all the unknowns. And so I don't want to come after the fact and, and do a larger increase because we weren't prepared, so I just wanted to do the $1.60 so that we were prepared. Part of that, it was about 93,000, but part of it was eaten up in, in some other increases and some utilities and some maintenance, things that we had to look at, because I didn't completely add the maintenance for the additional two vehicles. So.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, just to make sure people don't think that we don't want them to recycle. We do. It's a slight.
Increase. Was it, originally it was a $1.60?
It is a $1.60.
It's a $1.60, so for, except for the senior.
Except for seniors.
Except for seniors. So I, I don't want them to think that we want them to throw away more trash, we still want them to recycle, because it extends the life of our landfill. And if you could address that.
Yeah, in all reality, when it comes to, to the town, the more that trash they throw and the bigger containers that they have, the more we make.
That's true, but at the same time.
We're, that's the reason we're doing, the reason we're doing that is to promote them to save money.
Right.
By getting a smaller container and recycling more.
And also to extend the life of the landfill.
Extend the life of the landfill.
Because that is a big cost.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else for the, for the council? Well, this concludes the business of the town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Amon Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We adjourn.